I call to order the April thirteenth, twenty twenty one, City of Florence Planning Commission.
Hello?
My name is Derek Owens and I am sitting in for Mr. Chris Chaplin who is our normal chairperson. I'll just make the best effort I can to do the stellar job that Mr. Chaplin always does. Um, our first order of business is to um, to open our meeting in prayer. And I'm going to ask Mr. McCote if he would do that for us.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for life, health, and strength. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each and every member of this assembly here with the Planning Commission. Heavenly Father, we ask this to us, lead us and guide us and have us to do what's right and please it in your sight. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be over this meeting as we make decisions that are vital to our community. Lord, we ask this in your son Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Dorothy.
Yeah.
Item one, sorry. Can I say something? Our next item on our agenda is the approval of our meeting. This is going to be distributed to all the commissioners. Your deans will read over them.
If so, move.
That is back to y'all. Call for a motion.
Motion to approve. This is Dorothy.
Okay, thank you.
Second Moses.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Moses with a second there. All those in favor that it don't be known by saying aye, those on video can raise your hand, those by phone. Um, I'll call on you first.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone else can vote by a show of hands?
Unanimous?
I say it. And we'll move to our next agenda. And I would ask you guys, if you uh, just bear with me. In this Zoom meeting, I'm not very experienced at conducting a Zoom meeting, so bear with me and have some patience for them. Um, next item on the agenda is PC twenty twenty one dash oh eight. This is a request. To zone a parcel to NC fifteen pending annexation. The parcel is located at twenty four ninety nine Rainford Road. And it is identified as tax map number zero one two two one dash oh one dash one five eight. And our um, this agenda item is before the Planning Commission for Public Hearing, a recommendation for city council. Ms. Lane for staff report.
This is Forest Neighborhood on um, uh, probably in yellow, already in the city line. I think this is one of those neighborhoods. It's kind of a check report or just fill in a couple of things here. Um, it is found in NC fifteen, all around it. The um, the, the neighborhood conservation, so it is a single family.
Derek, this is Charles. I'm having trouble. Or am I the only one?
No, I'm having trouble also, child. This is Greg.
Yes, so am I.
All right, if you can give us a second, we'll see what we can, what we can do.
Is the problem with your connection? Is it, can you not hear?
What?
It's audio.
I wonder if they can hear us.
Can't hear.
How does that need to sound? I'm sorry, renew my ears.
Oh, mute us.
It's very jumbled, in and out.
We're experiencing technical difficulties. Please stand by.
Okay. If you'd like to do a test, one, two, three, and see it.
Myself?
Yeah.
Check, check. One day, let me hear you. Fine.
Hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, that's better.
Okay.
I can hear you.
All right. As I was saying, this parcel is um, surrounded by parcels that are already in the city limits, in Woodruff Forest. And everything around it is zoned, NC fifteen. These are all single family houses on large lots. And the future land use is neighborhood conservation. So this use is wholly in keeping with the neighborhood. City services are already available, so it would not need to be extended. And that concludes staff support.
Any questions for staff from the commissioners? Okay, no questions from staff. We're going to open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone present? Who would like to speak for or against this request? Okay, there is no one present. With that, I will call for a motion.
Come on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second for Mr. Howard. Who was that that made the motion, the first motion? Mr. McCote, Mr. Moses.
Agree it. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye, a show of hands. Okay. All right. Looks like it's unanimous. Uh, Ms. Hines, Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote unanimous and motion carries. Okay, for the city councilor, a recommendation for approval. Next item on the agenda is PC twenty twenty one dash oh nine. This is a request to zone a parcel as an empty space requirement pending annexation. It's located on the north side of Lake Oakdale. And the Lake Oakdale Dam. It's specifically identified as tax map number zero zero seven fifty one dash zero one dash zero four nine. This issue is before the commission for a public hearing, a recommendation to city council. Ms. Lane for staff report.
Thank you. All right. This is the north side of Lake Oakdale, which was, the south side of it was annexed about two years ago. This is the north side and they want to zone it, open space and recreation, which means that there can be no development on it. And the intent is to turn this over to the Oakdale Homeowners Association. And um, as you can see, it includes just the portion of the dam going over to Stratford, Stratton Drive. And then up to the portion of the parcels that um, are single family that are in the county. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lane. Is there any questions for staff? If being none, I will open this portion of our meeting up to public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Okay, not hearing anyone. Anybody here who'd like to speak against this request? Again, no one present. With that, I would call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I got a question. I got a question.
Okay.
Um, it's about the dam. Um, is that, what that dam is going to create any problems in the future for the city?
It will be owned by the homeowners association, so it will not be the city's responsibility.
Okay, just want to know.
That's a good question.
Yeah, well, my question, who owns it now?
The property owner. Yeah, the developer, the applicant.
The developer owns it now? Okay. I'll second the uh, motion if there hadn't been a second.
Motion by, I believe, was it Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hines gave some motion, Mr. Howard a second. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands, those by video and. Okay. Unanimous on the people via Zoom? How about Ms. Hines, Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the vote unanimous, the motion carries, it will go next to city council for consideration of a recommendation for approval. Next item on the agenda is. PC twenty twenty one dash ten. This is a request to uh, name the City of Florence Municipal Courtroom located at three twenty four West Evans Street. In recognition of the honorable Taff Giles Junior. This issue is before the planning commission for public hearing and recommendation to city council. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. According to the city rules, a person or organization can make a request to have a building or a place or a room named after someone significant. And the request has been made by the family of Judge Howard Taff Giles Junior. Who died recently to name the municipal courtroom in which he served for many, many years. And so it is um. Policy for the planning commission to hear that, make a recommendation, and then for city council to um, take that up.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, let me, uh, when, when someone makes a request such as this, what, is there any kind of notification given? Um, who do you, who do you notify when there's a request like this?
Well, it was.
Or do you?
It was put in the newspaper as a public notice.
Okay. No notice. I guess the courtrooms aren't in session right now, are they?
Yeah, I think it's a very limited docket in court system right now.
Yeah. I was just curious.
Okay, anybody else? All right, with that, um, we will move to the public hearing portion. Before I, before I do that, I would like to say that I have a. A close family member who was a former jurist who knew Mr. Giles well, although I didn't know him, but he. Had nothing but great things to say about his character and thought this was very fitting, a tribute to his service to the community. So. With that all up and it's up to public hearing, anyone who here who'd like to speak in favor of this request?
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Gary Finkley.
Hi, Mr. Finkley. How you doing?
Great. I'm just not going to let an opportunity, as you did, to not speak on the honorable Taff Giles. Taff was originally from Paplico, which is where I'm from. He served this area well as a deputy sheriff. He served as the Florence County Marister. He served as a municipal judge. And he was well liked among everyone. He was a man of character, a man of God, a man of his word. Um, and you know, I miss Taff. I love Taff. Taff actually was one of my witnesses. In a case where I defended someone and he basically testified against, because it was truthful, against law enforcement. It's hard to find a man of character like that. Um, so I could go on and on about Taff. But I know no one is going to object to that, but I just did not want this opportunity to go by without. Adding something to the record of his impeccable character and service to Florence County. He, he, you know, I know this is the city planning commission and I don't want this to be taken the wrong way. But he needs to be recognized in a manner that exceeds the bounds of the City of Florence, but I'm so glad that the city is, is. Is taking recognition of the service of Taff Giles. So I wholeheartedly support um, this naming of the courthouse. For the courtroom in his honor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much and very well, very real articulation of my. I ask somebody to speak in favor of this request. Okay, anyone here who'd like to speak against this request? All right, being none, I will call for a motion.
Motion to approve. This is Vanessa.
Second. Second Moses.
I got a second from Mr. McCote, I believe. I don't know who that made the first record, my first motion. Ms. Murray? Ms. Murray made the first motion, Mr. McCote the second. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hand. Unanimous on the, those folks via Zoom? Ms. Hines and Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The, the motion, uh, the vote to recommend approval is unanimous. The motion carries will go before city council. Do we have a date for that? I know there's some people present who probably interested in the date.
It will be the first Monday. It, it will be the first Monday of the um, May, when that goes before council. Oh, the, the second Monday.
Second Monday in May.
I apologize. Uh, May the tenth.
So, so it goes before city council, May the.
May the tenth, at one o'clock is the time the city council begins.
Okay, good. Thank you. Happy to see that we can honor people of character.
Absolutely. I, I think he and I took lunch breaks at similar times. When I would come back in the building, I would always see him up front and. Just a sort of welcome to be able to sit and say, hey, and chat with him a second. I, I dearly miss that.
Good. All right, next item on the agenda, uh, PC twenty twenty one dash ten, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one dash eleven, which is request to amend the plan development district. Plan development agreement for the Grove at Ebenezer Residential Development. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. All right, so here is the Grove at Ebenezer. Uh, this is a planned development district. Uh, here's a vicinity map showing its location near Interstate ninety five. Uh, and Pine Needles Road. Uh, zoning map, again, it's a planned development district, which is a residential and commercial mixture. Uh, and this actually goes by the old uh, city zoning ordinance for regulations. Uh, future land use, residential estate, and also um, right adjacent, public and institutional. So here are the development standards, uh, that were passed by city council in twenty sixteen by ordinance. Uh, the front setbacks for a single family detached residential are twenty feet. And the developer is requesting fifteen front, fifteen foot front setbacks. Which is um, a change that would require planning commission, planning commission approval, and also it would go on to city council. Uh, the developer is making this request for more developable space for phase three and also future phases. Uh, some of the constraints that they're running into are stormwater infrastructure, a future donation of land for the city rail trail. And also utility right of way easements. Well, again, this table shows the change uh, that is being proposed with a front yard setback for homes to be set back only, only fifteen feet from the front property line instead of twenty. Uh, city staff agrees with the amendment uh, with the caveat that it be limited to phase three and future phases. Uh, we think that this will limit confusion for some of the, for phase one and phase two. You'll have some houses that have the twenty foot setback. And you might have some houses with the fifteen foot setback. We just want the, to keep the character consistent in the different phases. Um, so that does conclude staff's report for the amendment change.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Yeah, I, I have a quick question regarding your last comment about the latter phases. So is, I mean, I guess that's. A component to this request, as you stated.
But initially, they, they requested that it be amended, the. I get, the Grove at Ebenezer in general, so that could include any phase, getting the fifteen foot front setback. So we would just. We would recommend that it be limited to phase three, and we know that they have future plans for phase four. And if there's anything beyond that, obviously let them have the.
I guess, so if, if this request gets approved. Included in this request is a limitation on these, what, latter phases? So we don't have to modify this request as it is currently written, right?
Right there, uh, the sketch plan that's coming up next is going to make use of this amendment change uh, from the twenty to fifteen. Uh, so that is, that is the reason for the request, this new phase.
I, I mean, I think for clarification purposes, if um, the motion would include staff's recommendations, I, I think that would be good for clarification.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's.
If that's the desire of planning commission.
All right, I guess. Are the other commissioners on, I mean, I guess we, as we make this request, I would. Ask the commissioners to keep that mod, slight modification or amendment to the request that's currently written in mind and include that in your motion, if you so desire. And with that, I will do indeed that and call for a motion. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. We have a public hearing portion of this as well. So is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Thank you, Mr. Doug. Okay, no one present to speak in favor. Anybody here who would like to speak against this request? All right, with that, we'll call for a motion. Mr. Howard?
I move, we uh, we approve the request uh, to the front setbacks from twenty to fifteen. For this uh, phase three and then any future phases. Was that worded correctly, Mr. Chair?
I mean.
Okay.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Right, have a motion and a second, and I'm not sure who that was.
This is Dorothy Hines.
Ms. Hines, thank you for that. So a motion, a second. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. All right. Looks like he's unanimous. Ms. Hines and Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
The recommend, the uh, votes recommend approval is unanimous, motion carries. Um, and it will go before, I guess, city council after this, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is PC twenty twenty one dash twelve. This is a request for a sketch plan review of the Grove's phase three. Located on Grove Boulevard and identified as tax map number zero 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 seven five dash zero one dash two two one. And this is um, Mr. Doug, help me out. Is there a public hearing, sketch plan? We're, we're just approving the sketch plan. There's no public hearing for sketch plan review, correct?
That's correct. There's no public hearing requirement for sketch plan review, review, but I, I do know that we have um, and uh, it, the, the developers engineer. In attendance, so if there are any questions beyond that which staff can answer, we do have um, the technical expertise on hand to answer that.
Okay. With that, we'll ask staff for a report.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, so here again is the Grove at Ebenezer, and we're specifically speaking about phase three of the Grove. Uh, here is a location map which puts the proposed sketch plan um, and that kind of. And the GIS guy messed with it for quite a while before he figured out exactly how the puzzle pieces fit, but that's what it would look like in relation to the aerial. Now, the zoning map, again, this is a planned development district, uh, future land use, again, a residential estate. So here is the sketch plan. Um, it is a PDD. Uh, this is seventeen acres. This will be fifty total lots, and they will all be single family detached homes. Uh, and then the engineer shared with us a possible future of phase four to just give us an idea of the layout, and that's what's shown here. Again, uh, going back to the amendment request, uh, currently you'll see the front yard setback is, is twenty feet. Um, and pending city council approval, uh, that would, that would be changed to fifteen feet. Here are the variances requested for this sketch plan. Um, the cul-de-sac, summer duck loop, uh, either, either side is denoted with the arrow that shows the total length. Of the cul-de-sac, uh, the unified development ordinance, uh, gives a four hundred foot maximum length. Um, the planning commission may grant a variance, and the, what is shown here is about thirteen hundred and twenty five uh, feet. So this is a variance request. Uh, B, the looped drive, which once you tie in phase four, summer duck loop. Uh, it's approximately, the loop drive is thirty six hundred feet. The unified development ordinance calls for a sixteen hundred foot maximum length. And then finally, uh, per the international fire code, if you have thirty lots or more. Uh, you need to provide two access points for emergency vehicle entrance. Um, and right now the sketch plan is proposing fifty lots with one access point of being approximately where the, where the arrow is. Uh, we did get together with the developer and the engineer and came up with a solution for temporary emergency access. So what you're seeing here is drawn by Mr. Bob Weaver. Uh, it's a temporary access road that will be in effect until. They get a more permanent emergency access on Pine Needles Road. And also phase four infrastructure goes into place uh, to keep this dead end road from being cut off essentially. Uh, we just want to make sure that emergency vehicles have a second entrance uh, into the neighborhood in case of an emergency. Uh, and also we wanted to make sure that there was a compliant turnaround for residents of the Grove at Ebenezer. So it does connect to Summer Duck Loop, which is phase three, and Ross Morgan Drive, which is in phase one. So those are the three variances being requested, and that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you very much. And I guess those, those variants has been reviewed by the appropriate entities and. Been approved.
They have the um, the cul-de-sac issue, um, you know, upon completion of development of phase four, it, it would, that cul-de-sac would turn into a, a loop drive. And they're solving the um, the cul-de-sac with a, you know, a fire approved turnaround at the end of, end of that. So. Um, the, the fire marshal has approved the, the turnaround. Um, the um. Again, with the thirty lot variance request, um, they are providing the emergency cut through that, which takes you back to, to Grove Boulevard. Um, in that case, and again, the fire marshal has approved that and, and uh, says that, that they could accommodate that in an emergency sense situation with the fire truck. Um, the, the loop drive variance request kind of is what it is, you know, it's um. You know, there's a sixteen hundred foot, linear foot requirement. They're requesting thirty six hundred feet. Um, so. Uh, you know, there'd be no permanent connection in, in that loop, so it just kind of is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I have a follow-up question to that comment is what, what is, I think it's important for the commissioners to maybe understand what the crap. What is the criteria that drives those decisions around, say, a limitation on a sixteen hundred foot loop drive?
A, a lot of it has to do with, with character, with um, you know, the, the neighborhood having, you know, connectivity within it, you know. You know, we can think of the neighborhoods we, we live in and how they're connected by blocks or, or connectors, or there's so many houses, or you only have to drive. You know, so far before you get on a collector's street or, or a main, main road, and, and it, it kind of comes down to, to character in, in many instances. Um, you know, sometimes there's limitations on site due to geography or, or other things that, that prevent these type things. So. Um, a lot of it is character driven. Some of it's life safety, just to provide turnarounds, you know, if a fire. You know, if a fire truck takes a wrong turn, that's.
Which is being addressed, you know, the way.
That, that's right. So, um, so yeah, if, if a fire truck takes a wrong turn, they might have to go further before they can cut the block or turn around. Um, but, you know, oftentimes if, if, if a turnaround point is provided for the fire truck, they can overcome those issues.
And I'd just say, look, I'm, I'm the guy who is very aware of character and aesthetics, drives a lot of my decision-making in the work that I do. But I, I, I guess I want to point out that it's kind of a subjective criteria, it's not some hard and fast, uh, you know, rule that we have to hold to, to meet a 1,600 foot maximum loop drive.
That, that's right. We, we in the planning department tend to back off of it when life safety issues are, are addressed, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Well, I'd just like to say, in our last meeting, we, uh, stated that there was a lot of variances coming before the commissioners. And it's happening again in this meeting. So is that going to become the norm now or what? Could you enlighten me on?
Yeah.
Why this is beginning to happen?
I, I did speak with the engineering department and, and we feel, we feel confident and we like having the rules in, in place. Um, and, and because every piece of land is, is a little different and different challenges are presented ba- based on the, the property itself, the geography, um, you know, water and sewer, these storm ponds and things of that nature. Um, we, we, we do like having the rules as they are and, but allowing case by case variances to come through. Um, a- and I have asked the, the engineering department and the planning department to, um, kind of start taking tally of some of the various requests that come in. And if there's anything that we feel that the code needs to be changed on, we, we can absolutely a- address that or absolutely if planning commission sees a particular issue that, that you'd like us to take a, a closer look at, we'd be glad to. But, um, right now, I think the engine, the engineering and the planning department like having the rules we have in place, but then take the variances on a case by case basis based on the, the uniqueness of, of each site.
Right, but like I said, I only raised this issue because last month we had it, and again this month. And perhaps the, uh, planning department should start taking a, a look and, and keeping tallies on how many variances requests we're having and, um, you know, make a decision if we should.
I think the, definitely the most common request is for cul-de-sac length. I think that's the one that, that comes up the most. Um, and oftentimes I think we've had a number of right of way widths come up as well. This one didn't come up in this, in this subdivision, but, um, cul-de-sac did.
And, and setbacks too, but Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just saying this for purposes of clarification, but the ordinance actually states that there, there, I mean, part of the ordinance is the ability for staff to grant variances, right? So am I right about that?
Ri- right.
So, so the text itself, the law, if you will, actually overtly stakes a opportunity for staff to grant variances. So, so in, yes, we are granting variances, but we're also keeping the, the, we're, we're keeping the spirit of the ordinance by granting variances, I guess is my point.
That's right. The code is written in such a way that, um, that yes, the, the, that the flexibility is built in through staff's review and planning commission's approval of, of these variances, yes.
Okay, now on this one, I think on the other one, the staff had an opinion, but, um, this one, um, there's nothing that says the city or the staff is, um, okay with this. I, I just want to make sure that we are doing, uh, what we're supposed to be doing.
Right. And I, I think at, at the time the staff report had gone out, we didn't have the, um, updated plan in hand. But, but I, I, I think we, we are good with the, um, the variance request for the cul-de-sac length and the emergency access installation based on the 30 lots. And, um, staff's gonna stay neutral on the, um, the length of the loop, I, I think, and let, let planning commission decide that one, yes.
Does that answer your questions, Ms. Hines?
Uh, yes, you've answered them.
Is there anyone else who has questions for staff? Thank you for that too, Ms. Hines. All right, with, with that, I guess, uh, we will call for a motion. Mr. Howard, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was unmuting. I moved to approve.
Have a motion, Mr. Howard, to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second from.
Uh, Dorothy Hines.
Ms. Hines, second from Ms. Hines, so motion, but, and I think some, someone, I think someone else made a motion to her, her, um.
This is Vanessa.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think she made a mo-, did you make a motion, Ms. Vanessa? Did you second that motion?
I did.
Okay, so a motion from Mr. Howard, second by Ms. Vanessa. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. All right, Mr. Hei, Ms. Hines and Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. We move to our last agenda item, which is PC 2021 dash 13. This is another request for a sketch plan review of Milton Point subdivision located off of Damon Drive. Tax numbers 00150 dash 01 dash 132. And this issue is before planning commission for approval as well. That report, please.
Yes, sir. There we go. So this is, uh, Middleton Point, uh, this is tax map number, uh, shown below. Uh, here is the affected area. Uh, what we're doing is join, uh, Middleburg Way with Greens Ward Drive. Uh, the developer will extend the existing water sewer and road infrastructure to serve this development. Uh, and it does require planning commission approval. So here's the zoning map, uh, this is zone NC 15. Uh, future land use is in line, a residential auto urban. So here's Middleton Point, uh, phase two B, uh, the arrows show the, uh, the, the lot, there's 13 total lots, so the arrow show the extent of the sketch plan. Uh, this is, uh, finishing out phase two of Middleton Point. There will be all single family detached homes. And again, they are constructing a road to, uh, get Middleburg Way and, uh, Greens Ward to connect. And this just shows a little bit, uh, this shows the non locked up version of the sketch plan. Uh, so NC 15, uh, minimum lot area 15,000 square feet, minimum lot width 100 feet, uh, in the front. Uh, the, um, setbacks are shown below and the sketch plan, uh, does meet those requirements established by the unified development ordinance. And, uh, the next step will be for the developer to submit a development plan for staff review, uh, before construction would begin. And that does conclude, uh, staff's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? All right.
This is Vanessa, I have a question.
I'm sorry, okay.
Um, okay. Is the, the plan that proposal, is this similar to, um, the one that was, that we just previously shown? Is, is it kind of what, the same, the same request?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, for a sketch plan approval, yes, ma'am, it is the same request. If it's over, if it's a subdivision of over, uh, five lots, then it does require planning commission approval along with, um, utilities, sewer, water, and also the road extension. So it does require planning commission approval. Yes, ma'am.
So this is like the first phase of this plan?
It's phase two B, this will finish out phase two. Uh, so it was always in the works, um, and this just, uh, this will finish out that phase. It'll connect those two roads, uh, that were meant to connect when the development, uh, was proposed.
And Ms. Murray, this is, um, uh, originally, this was a subdivision that, um, the other phases were constructed in years ago. And, um, they, they had, they had this phase approved. It was much like a Ryan Hills that was approved in the, in the last meeting. Um, in, in this case, it was previously approved by a previous planning commission. But because it lay dormant and it, and had no activity for a period of longer than two years, it's required to come back to planning commission. And they are, um, i- in this case, making absolutely no changes from the previously approved plan. It completes the, the neighborhood, it's the final phase of the neighborhood. And, um, and would fall right in line and in character wi- with the developed phases of this existing neighborhood.
So this project has already passed all the variances that the city requires.
That's right, and I, I don't believe it had any variances at the time, and they're not requesting any at this time, yes. It's following the original plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Being none, I will call for a motion. Mr. Howard, I see.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Howard, do I have a second, second?
Second.
A motion from Mr. Howard, a second from Mr. Moses. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. All right, looks unanimous, Ms. Hines and Ms. Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Vote is unanimous to recommend approval, motion carries. With that, Mr. Dudley, you got any older new business?
No, I, I would just like to note that, um, per, um, Ms. Hines' r- request, we, we, the planning department could take a closer look and we could at least compile a list of some of the, you know, go back through a period of time and, and see what the various requests have been for various neighborhoods and, and maybe point to what the uniqueness of that situation was. And it, it might, uh, data collection always sheds light on things, so we could take a closer look at it, so absolutely.
Yeah, you know, I, if, a- as some, as, as myself speaking, as someone who develops property and, and contributes to the built-in environment in the town in which we live, aesthetics are extremely important to me. And I, I know sometimes that introduces a high level of subjectivity. And I appreciate the, uh, ability to request variances and have variances be granted for those reasons. Cause there are often times where some project that doesn't nestle just perfectly down into the criteria that is established by the unified development ordinance, it's nice to have some flexibility, um, from level-headed people who understand the end goal.
Right. I'll add to, um, you know, I played with Legos as a kid. And, you know, you had a box of Legos and they were only meant to be certain, you know, pieces fit together with certain other pieces. But when you were building something, you always wanted that other piece that you didn't have, you know, some that you could specially create. And, uh, the variance kind of allows you to do that in those unique situations, so, yeah.
That's a good analogy, yeah. All right, with that, I think we are ready to call for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Or a second? A motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you very much, it's good to see.